Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comments? Oh, before we start, I should note that Roseanne, Ezra, Janice, and Peter are all excused. All have excused absences. Next on to public comments. I don't think there's anybody from the public out there. Anybody have anything to say? Not on the agenda?
I really like the new crosswalks.
Oh, thank you. You're coming. Almost done. Thank you.
For the record.
Any other comments? No comments?
No one else likes them?
I love them.
We have a consensus.
All right, we will close public comment at 7:03. Review and approval of minutes of 9:13. Those minutes just came out, so I believe we're not prepared to review those.
Yeah, I can make copies for everybody, so you can take them up the next meeting.
So we'll push that off to the next meeting. So first on the agenda of regular business is Jarob M. Sanderson, trustee of Robin Realty New Market Trust, Tuck Realty Corporation. Continuation of public hearing for an application for subdivision and special use permit for property at 36 Dame Road, tax map U2, lots 297 and 320, R1 zone. The proposal is for an 11-unit residential open space design development. The special use permit will allow a 150-square-foot wetland impact pursuant to Section 5.03, Paragraph F, of the Wetland Overlay District and the zoning ordinance. So we have some representatives of the applicant here.
This is for me?
Yeah. You can share with somebody else. Susan put that together for you.
So before you start, Diane, would you update us on where we are? I think I've missed the last. I know I missed the last meeting, and I think there's been at least one TRC that I'm not aware of.
Yes.
So would you update the board on that?
Yes, we had a. We received revised plans third week of September, I believe. And we had a scheduled a TRC last Thursday at 10 o'clock, I think it was. And we didn't have full attendance, but we had a good meeting, good exchange of information. And there was a lot of discussion back and forth between Rick Malosky and Phil McDonald of Underwood Engineers regarding the drainage in the cul-de-sac area and some changes that need to be made to accommodate driveway platforms, if you will, and to get them to mesh properly with the shoulder grading. And there was some technical recommendation that the elevation be changed in the drainage detention basin. And those were really the major comments that they were. And the applicant has agreed to modify the plans and present those to Underwood Engineers. And I have actually put together a list of conditional approval, conditions for approval this evening. And that's one of them, that they be updated accordingly.
Okay.
We also discussed the need for fire protection in that area. And Rick Malosky, in his capacity as fire chief, had some major concerns about fire flows in that area. And Mike Hoffman, our building official, put together a memo on what the NFPA Section 1 says about rural water supplies. And it does require that there be adequate fire flows. And where there isn't adequate water to connect to the subdivision, alternative means such as cisterns or approved reservoirs can be provided. And as a result of that discussion, Rick waived the cistern requirement, which was really his first preference for the development. And the applicant agreed to put sprinklers into the new units, the 11 units that will be located within the subdivision. And that seemed to be a reasonable accommodation. So that was the result of that discussion. And we also received review comments from Mark West. If you recall, we hired Mark West as our environmental consultant to review the, well, two things. There was a special use permit filed for a very limited impact, wetland impact, near the entrance to the development. And there were also concerns initially raised about the suitability of lots, some of the front lots for building. And there was a shifting of property lines to make those lots more usable. And Mark has provided us with a review, a final review letter and just saying that he was pleased with the revisions that they made and that he wanted to see, you know, signage along the wetland buffer area. And I'm sure the applicant will show you where that is in the plan presentation. And his final comment was that there be care taken to minimize the amount of tree removal and clearance within the forested wetland buffer area that coincides, if you will, with the 75-foot well radius.
Yep.
And I think in a nutshell, that covers all the points. Val, you were there. Would you like to add anything to my comments at this point?
I think that covered the comments relative to those specifics.
Okay.
Does any other board members have a comments? I'd like to just get the applicant to just walk us through where we are with lots, lot sizes. For the record, for people at home that haven't been up to speed on this. And a few changes that were made. I know you changed the sloping. Are you going to change the sloping of the cul-de-sac and whatnot?
Sure. Do you want to just walk through what changes you made since the last?
Just a quick recap would be good.
I can do that. I don't know if it's on the other side of that or not, but.
Joe Corndy, the Jones Beach Engineers. Some of the things we added since the last round of changes was we added a wooded buffer on lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 to provide a expanded area on those lots that will remain wooded. Those lots are in the 100-foot wetland buffer from the, wetland buffer from the wetlands, but only for a cluster subdivision. We moved the house on Lot 1 forward. The driveway, we kept all the development on the upland side of the stone wall, which was one of the concerns previously raised.
C3 is a good sheet to be on to what Joe's talking about.
The, one of the comments came up at the TRC meeting about the detention pond, the way it was designed. There was actually concerns about it being a wet pond. So we've actually eliminated the lower contours, and we're going to seed it with a seed mix that's on D2. But that'll, that seed mix is the same type of plantings that are in the wet meadow. So the detention pond will basically be an extension of the wet meadow. Detention ponds built in the upland area. We're adding wooded buffers, wooded buffer plaques all along the edge of the detention pond and along that wooded buffer line, so residents know that it's a no-cut line running through their parcel. Those will also be described in their deeds. I think one other, at the last TRC meeting, one of the, we had previously designed, or the design of the subdivision of the cul-de-sac is such that it's a, the slope of the road slopes away from the middle. And the goal was to save as much of the existing vegetation in the middle of the cul-de-sac. One of the concerns was during plowing, they were going to have snow in the middle of the cul-de-sac. They're going to push snow into the middle. So they wanted to have a catch basin added in the middle of the cul-de-sac that would then be connected to catch basin 2. So we'll end up adding that. The under drains that are in the middle of the cul-de-sac will tie into that catch basin. So there's a couple of small technical things like that that we've agreed to do with the, for Phil McDonald from Underwood. The lot sizes themselves are all still above 20,000 square feet. They shrunk a little bit on the backside on lots, or Lot 1 shrunk a little bit, trying to put as much land into open space as possible. Other than that, I think that's pretty much it, other than minor tweaks to the details and things like that.
Any, members have any questions?
Yeah, just a question and not to throw something into this. But when we approved the special use permit for the open space subdivision in the yield plan, part of that discussion was the connectivity to the trail system that would come out onto that Ham Street Extension area or, you know, by the old ice pond. How are we envisioning that the owners of the subdivision will be able to, like, just access over to the Royal Street?
Connectivity for the lot owners.
For that trail, yeah, for the lot owners. Are we, are you thinking of coming like a right-of-way through Lot 5 or?
Basically, I think the trail, and I can point out, I think generally where we walked on our site walk was we sort of.
Yeah, we kind of walked through that.
We, we walked initially this sort of in the cul-de-sac area down to the trail. This map doesn't show the trail as it kind of goes through the meat of the, the heart of the property, but we did walk sort of this way out to Lamprey. And then when we came back, some of us walked the existing trail that was somewhat overgrown back out to Dame Road. So we proposed that the public access be along that existing trail with some, some minor just improvements, just basically cutting back some brush to get to Lamprey. And then the, the, what we had, what we had talked about with sort of just amongst our team was that, I think I might have mentioned this as well at the TRC, was that folks would just come along the backside of their, of their properties and sort of access the open space and the trails along the backside of their property. If there's some other thought you might have, we'd love to hear it, but.
Oh, I just, you know, didn't know, hopefully you were contemplating put out, potentially just doing like a right-of-way for the neighborhood owners from, through that long driveway along Lot 5. It would connect them right into the area that we walked.
Yeah, it's a possibility. I just was hoping to avoid that sort of public-private sort of conflict with an easement for a trail access along someone's driveway or along a property line. If there's a way that folks can pop out their back, you know, from their backyards into the open space and navigate to trails, that would be the preferred method for us.
Yeah, I just think the concept of the open space is to, particularly with the wetlands, is that, you know, you're not back there creating a trail or making a trail.
Yep.
What about, you know, if you're going to have them access that right off of Dame Road?
Well, you go.
Build an access path now that the frontage there on the road.
I don't think you can do that from the, from the top.
No, I mean, I mean, if you look at, I mean.
The steep slopes, it's all steep slopes.
This, this plan does sort of show, it does show the limits of the wet is in this lighter green. So folks can certainly hop over the wall and, you know, which is, which is the boundary of these back lots and be in uplands and be on yet-to-be-established trail. But it, you know, it certainly could be something easily blazed without having to cut trees to sort of get to this open space, get to these trails that exist. And these folks on the top of the height of land behind these lots could certainly walk from their backyards onto a trail network and get to Lamprey fairly easily without having to interfere with, with private property rights and have sort of again that conflict between, you know, that's the last thing you want is, you know, Lot Number 5 to be the guy that gets the, all the traffic down his driveway with folks walking down the drive with dogs and what have you. So the thought was, we created this open space, this clustered pot of houses that could all easily hop off the back of their backyards onto, onto common trails. And it works without any wetland impacts, although if there were some wetland impacts, those would be fairly easy to achieve for permits as far as, you know, for pedestrian trails. That happens all the time, but in this particular case, we wouldn't need that.
Yeah, but aren't we telling the Concom that we're staying away from that wetlands? And that's.
Right.
Right, so the only thing we would really, the only thing that we would really propose with the wetland areas would be passive, passive recreation, walking along, perhaps walking along the buffer or the border of the wetland. But that would really be about it. We wouldn't propose to be cutting trees or anything like that.
The people would be create, well, what I'm hearing maybe are two things. One is, and I'm, I think I'm kind of conflicted on it. Are you expecting that the owners, as they move in, are going to be creating their own trail basically behind the stone wall so they are the art of the upland? Or are you actually proposing that you will create a trail system behind those properties?
We are proposing the former, which would be the owners would create sort of their own access to their open space. So they would sort of self-manage their open space. And that would be part of the covenants, that they could create and maintain trails in the open space as long as it didn't conflict with other restrictions of the open space and conflict with the ordinance, of course, which is protection of those environmental features such as wetlands, et cetera. So most oftentimes, we leave it up to the associations to maintain and create. In most cases, it's create, but in this case, it's both their trail network. And again, the public access component of it, which isn't required by the ordinance except for density, but we're allowing it because I think it makes good planning sense is just to, is to, I'm sorry, in this area here where the existing trail is from Dame Road out to Lamprey, just to maintain that as a, as a public access trail.
Go ahead.
Is that going to be secured with an easement and a right-of-way? So that we have something written into the homeowner's documents, including, you know, that it would be?
Correct, yeah, I think, I think we, it would be so noted on the plans that it would be a, and we delineate the, the area that's for public access. And it would be limited to this trail, this existing trail system that's there now, just that one trail.
I'd like to see it as a legal right-of-way.
Sure.
Or an easement on the plan.
Yeah, I think as, when you noted on the plan, we want to see a.
They do a 10-foot easement.
Whatever.
10-foot easement on the plan that just follows the existing trail.
Yeah.
That's easy enough to do.
I think we should talk about the other side, though. I'm kind of confused about that because we're telling the Concom we're staying away from the wetlands, and yet we're telling people that we want them to climb over the stone wall in their backyard and walk right along the edge of the wetlands to get to the open space? Which is not, I mean, it's the open space, right? But it's not a, there's nothing defined, correct?
There's no, there's no existing, there's no existing trail along the stone wall, but it's, it would certainly be something that would be very easily, easy to create along the stone wall would be a, a trail that wouldn't require any cutting of trees. It would just be maybe some limbing of some branches, maybe blazing of a few trees here and there just to identify where the trail was. In most cases, along the stone wall would be fairly obvious.
Yep.
But if that's, if that's not something that's agreeable to the board, we can certainly come up with something in the alternative.
I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud. It's something that's unique. I don't, I generally see accesses that are more well-defined, like, you know, between two lots, you have an easement on the lot line that allows people to walk down there. Now, I understand that diminishes the values of the lots, but those are what I'm more accustomed to seeing. I'm not very accustomed to seeing basically say, get to the open space and then walk behind the other lots. If that works, that's fine. I'm just, you know, I'm just talking out loud, I guess.
I run a lot of trails. I want you to see as people will just sort of cut trails where they will cut trails.
Okay.
Regardless of wetlands or not. And then the other side of it is, if there's a trail out here, the reason I said down the side of the road is people tend to just go out, they're going to go out onto the road. They're going to walk down Dame Road and then hop on that well-defined trail at that point.
And that's the other, that's the other option is they just do that.
So that's what they're actually going to do.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, absolutely.
But these, I mean, the, the things that I've just talked about behind the stone wall here and along the backside of Lot 5, I mean, it's fairly well-defined, fairly obvious.
Yep.
And it's upland and it's decent, decent terrain. There's, we're not talking about a lot of topography in this area, so it's relatively flat, easy to walk on. Same thing along the backsides of the lots over here, you know, 7 through 11. The topography is such that if you're just following that, the contours along the backside of these lots, fairly easy to get to the established trails already. And in fact, part of this, part of back here already is a trail of sorts along the back here. I don't think it's sort of not called out as one because it's not as obvious as the one that follows the, along the bank of the intermittent stream here, but.
Okay. So Glenn, you, excuse me, Glenn, you're comfortable with that, that that'll work itself out? They'll find the.
They'll, they'll, like I said, my biggest concern is Dame.
Yeah, okay.
So that's where they're actually going to go.
Yeah, we can definitely delineate that as part of our easement plan. It'd be 10-foot or whatever, or 15-foot, whatever's appropriate.
Nobody else has any concerns. I'm done talking about that. I'm fine with it.
Do you think we're okay, though, as regarding additional foot traffic that would drive on, just on Dame Road as they're coming down? Or did I misunderstand that?
Dame Road is going to be defined easement for them to park and go through. I mean, to, to walk through, not to park, to drive, to walk through.
To walk, yeah, I'm just trying to make sure because sometimes that road can be very concerning.
You're talking about people walking down, out of the, out of the neighborhood, onto Dame Road to come down this public access?
Yeah.
That would be extremely dangerous.
Yeah.
Because of this line of sight along that.
Yeah, exactly.
And we're promoting that by saying that.
I don't think of that.
That's why if you could. I haven't walked the site, so I don't know. And that's, so I'm going to, I'm going to make suggestions that are probably bad. But if you could, if you could do something down along Lot 11, right along the edge, that would be, that would come right off of there and cut in. And that would mean you don't have to go out onto Dame Road to create things and give them a pathway.
Yeah, we should, we could easily create right along the edge of the road, a 10- or 20-foot easement as well through that open space area for, to connect to Dame, or rather, to our new road, which would be a little bit better line of sight, obviously, than at that, this corner.
I think that'll add a lot of value, too, sort of a.
We can do that. Joe's taking notes, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
He doesn't really take notes, but he should be. Richard Ross taking notes over that.
Okay, Diane, go ahead.
I just, the stormwater management area, as you call it, that will be on land that's owned by the homeowners association.
That is correct. Yeah, there'd be an easement.
So implicit in that is that they would be responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of that stormwater system. And I think what we'd like to see is some kind of agreement that they would be, you know, subject to doing the maintenance. And I know you mentioned in your notes that there'll be inspections by an engineer every so often. I think we need to kind of memorialize that, if you will. New Market's moving towards participation of the NS4 program, and we're going to be required to have more legal instruments to assure that these things will be maintained over time. So that would be a recommendation that I would make, that that be included as part of the condition of approval.
Yeah, typically.
That's already in it, right? Your condition?
Well, I've added reference to it, yes.
Typically, what we find, and I apologize because I don't know how New Market typically does, drainage associated with roads, but what we would do is we would have, we would incorporate the deed of the right-of-way on road acceptance along with any easements associated with drainage and all those improvements to the town. So while it was prior to the road acceptance, the subdivision association would own, maintain, take care of, what have you. And then once acceptance happened, it would be turned over to the, to the town so that they could maintain in perpetuity.
The road is, but there would be an easement to allow the drainage from the town's road to exit into that area.
Absolutely, the easement would be in perpetuity into that.
Right, but that doesn't mean the town would be responsible for any drainage, I guess is where.
What we typically do is we give the town the ability to maintain it so that if it needs to, for whatever reason, go in and maintain for whatever purposes that they can. So what we do is we, we give that easement right to the town when we turn over the acceptance of the road.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? I see a couple of people walked in. You guys here for this public hearing? Do you have anything, any comments? The public hearing, why it's still open? If you do, please come up to the microphone, please. And please just give us your name and address and.
Grand Deville, 41 Dame Road. We missed the last couple of meetings, so we weren't really up to speed what was going on. But we come to the first few meetings and we voiced our concerns about our property, which is directly across from, and we haven't heard from Mike or anything. So we didn't know if our concerns were even going to be met through this whole process. So we wanted to see what was happening tonight and where you're at.
Okay, do you want to address that? Go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, we've, we've met on site with the Riley's. And I think we, during our site walk, we actually took a look at the possible impacts to their property. They are here, I believe, is their house location on the plan. So the concern was appropriately headlights that may impact their, the enjoyment of their property, in particular, when they're in their home, in their living room, or their bedrooms, or what have you. My suggestion to them, as it is with most neighbors that we potentially have impact to, is it's not just throw something, fix it, something that we don't even know is broken. Because the current driveway is approximately in the location of where the road is proposed to enter the site. But we don't know until it's built, really, you know, we could sort of, we can do some, some engineering and some, some guestimates as to what headlight glare might do as it, as it, sort of as the cars exit the subdivision, how it could, how it will potentially impact their property. But we just don't know. To me, it appears that there won't be an impact. And I think, I don't know if it was Val, I spoke to you about that as well when we were looking at it on site that day. But we're willing to put some money in some, into escrow. If that's something the board wants to consider, we're willing to put $1,000 into escrow, which would cover the cost of a few significantly sized evergreens that could be planted on their property in the event that, once the road is built, that there, there are issues with, with headlight, you know, glare onto their property. So we're willing to do that. Once it's built, we can look at it. If there's an impact, they can use that money towards planting some trees. We've met out with, my landscaper met with, with, with all of us on site, took a look at possible impacts. If there is no impact, the money would come back to us. If there is one, they can use it to plant. I mean, that seems fair to me. I don't know what the board thinks, but good solution, at least.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm comfortable with that. Are you comfortable that $1,000 is the right number?
Well, talking to my landscaper, we, we thought it was, you know, and again, it, again, it partly depends on what time of year we're talking about planting. I always like to plant in the fall for two reasons. One is plants are cheap and it's a good time to plant, quite frankly. So, you know, we typically do our subdivision entrances. We'll do, we'll, we'll buy plants at a fairly good price, and it's a good time to plant. So I think $1,000 would cover, you know, several trees, maybe three or four trees, plus the, plus the labor to plant, so.
Could we do something on the fact that we could say it would be, or not to exceed, you know, between here and here? Only because I just had some tree work done, and it was, either I did a very bad job at it or that's not enough money. So can we, could we do something where we just say?
It's money in escrow, so it's upfront. He'd be putting a certain amount in escrow.
Right, no, I think my point is, is that between now and then, we don't really kind of know what that, what those costs are. So could we say, you know, between $1 and $3,000, $2,000, not to exceed $2,000 with, you know, proof, blah, 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 anything, and then whatever left over, it goes back to you. It's just, you know, to plant something, if you go to Home Depot, you're going to buy something, it's really going to be small. And on Dame Road, who knows if it's going to last? And if you want to buy something that's more mature, it's going to be substantial in cost, plus the labor to actually plant it. So can we do anything that can help us with that?
And I'm not talking about Home Depot, little trees.
I get that, too.
Talking about, you know, maybe eight or 10-foot evergreens that are.
From what I just went through, that's not enough money.
That's not enough.
Well, the discussion is how much money goes to escrow? Because he's going to get it all back. He's going to get whatever different, all of it, if there is no impact.
Exactly, right.
And the differential, if there, you know, if he only needs $1,000 worth of trees.
I mean, in this particular case, as I said, as I said before, in this case, I really don't believe there will be an impact. You know, and there are times where it's just blatantly obvious that we're going to impact. There's just no getting around it. In this case, I really don't think there is, just because of the position of their house and the roadway. It kind of, kind of skirts, it's kind of the, I think the headlight glare, I suspect, is going to go between the house and their existing pool and not really cause any problems. But you just don't know what that, the headlight sweep's going to do as it turns the corner. But you just don't know what that, the headlight sweep's gonna do as it turns the corner onto Dame Road. So again, I, I'm happy to put that money in escrow. If it needs to be a little bit more, we can do that.
That's all I'm just asking.
Because I suspect we'll get it back, but...
Yes, you get it back, so.
Yeah.
Jane, we can, we can decide on any number we feel comfortable with.
It could be forty grand, or hopefully not. That's a lot of trees, but, but that's why I involved my landscaper. That's why we met on site. We, we wanted to, you know, talk about numbers and how many trees and that sort of thing. And it's just not, it's, it's just not obvious that, A, it's gonna happen, and, and B, where to plant them if it were to happen, so.
Understood. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments, questions? Yes, ma'am, come on back up, please.
The reason we can't tell whether it's gonna impact or not is because everything has their leaves right now. Once everything falls, it's wide open over there. So that's why, we don't know what it's gonna look like, but yeah, we're worried about that. The other question I had was about the streetlight. You had mentioned that, and I didn't know if that was in or out. The streetlight at the beginning of this thing, because that's gonna be an issue.
It is being required by the Public Works Director.
So that's gonna be another issue, so. I don't know where we stand on that, but where, depending on where they put the streetlight, it's gonna be in my living room? Or is it gonna be, you know, what, where is it going to be?
It's a good, in their living room.
Right, so you know, have a great party.
I think we should, Joe, we showed on the plan, correct?
Yes, and it's on the town side of the road.
Yeah, it's heading, yeah, so it's heading away, it's away from your house, it's on the other side.
So Joe, what's, um...
What sheet?
We get down to the...
I think it's P one, I believe, and...
We get down to the reflecting streetlights, so you can do all the fixtures.
This is across this one.
P one.
P one, P one.
Oh, yeah, roadway sign, proposed streetlight.
Those are details, it shows, shows what it is. Oh, the type of light?
Oh, it's way from the...
I think the type of light is probably more important than where it is.
Right, you can tell low lighting and not one of those big, yeah.
Detail, with the detail may not be on here, because it's, it's whatever DBW wants. That's a good question. What's the spec?
Yeah, whatever you see driving home tonight at the intersections is typically what, is what you see. It's the newer ones that Rick requires, so. I don't know the particular details about them, but...
Down shielded, or are they?
Yeah, it has to meet our dark side ordinance.
Yes.
And whereabouts, did you say? It's gonna be to the, if you look at the driveway, it's gonna be the right of the driveway?
Yeah, it's to the, well, it's to the left of the drive, toward the drive here, so it's on this side of the road, the west side of the drive, for the road.
Towards town, towards town.
Towards town?
Yeah.
Not towards your house.
But I think the down, the down shielded lights, focuses all light.
Break down.
Most to the light, I shouldn't say all, most to the ground.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be a spotlights, unless you really want them, we'll point them at your house.
Okay, good for that. And then, guess, one more question.
Can you please just come to the microphone? I'm not so sure they can hear you.
So obviously, we're gonna get a streetlight. But, and the other part was that you said we'd make a decision when the foliage and all that, when you finish the building, about whether we're gonna be able to put screening up or not. Who makes that decision?
The way I anticipate it working is there'll be money escrowed.
Yeah.
If, if you and he agreed that the screening needs to be done, that's fine. But it'd be, if there's any discussions, it would be Diane that would make the decision on, yeah, we need the screening, right?
Yeah, and I think the town council would recommend that there be an escrow agreement drawn up that would clarify the details, how much the amount is, and when it will be released. And within a certain timeframe, I would think within a year, perhaps, you would wanna be able to make that judgment.
Of course, the seasons.
So that it goes through all four seasons.
Yeah.
And so we can have some kind of a legal agreement drawn up. This would be between the town and the developer that would stipulate what those conditions would be and how that would work.
Right, so I was just wondering, who would make that?
The planning office would make the decision.
They would make that.
And we would perhaps consult with a landscaper or a landscape architect to make sure that what's being proposed is appropriate and compatible.
Thank you.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be this fall, obviously, because we won't really be in the ground until, you know, I would say at the earliest, after, you know, late fall or early winter, before we even start construction. So the idea would be that we'd probably wait that one season till next fall to see what happens.
Right, that makes sense.
And we know your escrow accounts are, what, five percent interest? So...
Ten.
Ten, so we're, we're happy to put.
Need like a notation the minutes, there's a lot of sarcasm going on during the sessions.
And you gotta keep it light. We're all, you know, we're all volunteers here.
Five years later.
Chuckle, chuckle. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? There's one other thing that I, I feel responsible to bring up, is we have a, I think everybody has a copy of an email from...
Jeff.
Jeff.
Goldenoff.
Goldenoff of the Conservation Commission. Basically apologizing and saying they haven't had a chance to look at the plans. And they would like to see a set of plans before... I don't know when their next meeting is.
Well, they have a meeting on Thursday, as he indicated, that he would be putting it on the agenda. And the, the gist of his letter is, they didn't seem to have too many concerns about the wetland impact itself, which is the special use permit that's being required. But there were some concerns about reducing the buffer, and they wanted to have the opportunity to weigh in on that and to see the plans. And we didn't get the subdivision plans with the revisions. Well, we got them the third week of September, but they didn't get copies. And they feel that they really need the additional time to take a look at it. So they've asked if it could be postponed until they have an opportunity to meet. And I think it's up to the planning board to decide whether that's reasonable or not. I just wanted to point out in the regulations that it's, the planning board may wa, may waive the hundred-foot setback. That's in our subdivision regulations. But for the special use permit, there is a provision in there that the Conservation Commission provide written comments to the planning board before the decision is made. And I have actually crafted the conditions of approval to provide an option for them to come to the board after. If the board is inclined to conditionally approve this tonight, we have to go through conditions and so forth. But that it could be perhaps approved with a condition. If there are concerns, that we would have to come back and revisit it and resolve the issue with the Conservation Commission.
Just on that subject, do we actually have the written waiver request for the?
Both of those were provided to the planning board with the application back in, in August.
Correct.
And they were prepared by Jim Gove, who's a certified wetlands scientist, and...
The waiver request with the...
Yes, that is correct.
And then did that go to the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, and we've met with the Conservation Commission. We've received their verbal input at, at one of their meetings. The takeaway that I received from our representative from, from Gove Environmental and from, from this email that I've just read is that they were supportive of the special use permit for the direct wetland impacts. They had some concerns about the hundred-foot buffer. I assumed all along that, that they were working in tandem with Mark West, who's been hired by the planning board to do a fairly comprehensive review of that wetland buffer request. So we would love to, to see the board not continue the application. I know it's up, up to the board, of course, to, to do what it pleases, but to, to condition the approval on, on that, that final review by the Conservation Commission, receiving that letter from them. But I think they're, I think we've addressed their concerns relative to the direct well impact. So, you know, assuming the condition of granting the special use permit for that impact would be getting their letter, that's, that seems fairly obvious that they will grant that. They may not be supportive of the hundred-foot buffer waiver. I don't know. I wasn't at that meeting, and I can't speak for them certainly, so. But we have made some great efforts to modify our plans in accordance with Mark's recommendations. And I feel we're in a good place with it.
So just so that, I'm not mixing this up, because I'll probably be making the motion, I think, so not folks are jumping. The first thing that we would be approving would be the special use permit relative to the 503 Wetland Protection Overlay District for the impact. And the recommendation that I'm hearing from you, Diane, is that one of the conditions would be subject to the written comments being received by the commission.
That is correct.
And secondly, we would be voting on section, a waiver of section 3.14A relative to the hundred-foot buffer.
That is correct.
That it is, we do not need comments from the Conservation Commission on that particular waiver. They're requesting that we receive comments before we grant that.
That's correct.
So that, we could grant that waiver on a condition, I don't know how we would wanna word it, relative to receiving support by the Conservation Commission. You know, it's still gonna be out there. You're gonna have a, if we get negative report from the Conservation Commission, then that waiver in default of the condition would, you know, would be denied.
Yeah, that, that particular tact wouldn't work for us, only because I think you can, you've already identified what the problems inherent with that are, because we may not be able to please all the members of the Conservation Commission who are advisory to you. Your, your, your environmental consultant is the one we've worked closely with, who's recommending the waivers appropriate. So I guess, I mean, I can see that in the first case, you know, granting the special use permit for the wetland impact subject to their letter. They seem supportive of that.
The other one, we would, not to cut you off, but the other one, we would be making a decision as a board to forego any comments from the Conservation Commission if we are to grant this waiver. So I think that's more of a decision from the board. We're either continuing the application till the next meeting. If we don't, if we feel that we really want those comments before we vote, or we're acknowledging that we're okay with not having the comments because of the information that we have, you know, our own engineers on that, wetlands people. It's just, that's gonna be a decision of the board.
What's everybody think?
I, you know, just not sure of the precedent of it, if that has happened before, you know, if that's a common thing. And that's the only real question I have for it, what is, how often does this come up? And how have we acted in the past? I mean, we've got a lot of good information here. I think it's actionable information.
Or it has passed?
Yeah.
What, what has happened in the past?
Have we?
Whether we've postponed decisions because...
Whether we made a decision without comments. Like, do you still, I mean, how is it?
I don't think we have any precedent to that effect. I mean, we usually try to coordinate as closely as we can with the other boards and commissions. Part of the problem is the timing of their meeting is after ours.
Right.
So they're meeting this week on Thursday.
Yeah.
So that means that there's a time lag between when they can get comments to us and respond to our requests. So I don't think there's really a...
When did they get the waiver request? And when did they get?
We submitted, all that information, we made available to them immediately upon receiving it from the applicant, which was in mid-August.
And then they, they had one representative attend the, the meeting in August.
It was actually in September.
September meeting. And then we, in our September meeting, which was the Tuesday before their Thursday, we did publicly and obviously continue this hearing.
That's right.
So it could have been taken up at the, at that Thursday meeting. I'm just trying to play out the timing, whether or not they had, you know...
But they didn't get the plans.
The latest set of plans were only done last week.
They didn't get the latest set, plus they didn't get Mark West's recommendations until last week as well.
They haven't even looked at the plans. They haven't seen the reconfigured lots where we shifted the lot lines,
which, for me, that was a big item that I had a concern about with the waiver.
Yeah, to me, the question comes down to, I mean, I generally wanna move things along. But if, if we were to vote, and if the board wanted to vote and approve this tonight, I have, I don't think I have any issue with that. We just have to understand that that means we're gonna ignore whatever the Conservation Commission has to say. And so if everybody's comfortable with that, it's fine. If you're not comfortable with it, fine. I would prefer, if we're gonna get comments, if we're gonna say we need to get comments from the Conservation Commission, then I think it's only fair to say that we're going to put some validity into those comments, at least have discussion about it. We may not ultimately agree with them, but to say we're gonna, we wanna wait to get comments from you, but we're not gonna wait to get comments from you, what's the point? So I would prefer to wait, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think that's...
Ron, about way of saying that, is that I just don't feel comfortable saying...
It's disingenuous, because our, our regulations are requesting that they provide the comments. But they just got the information, so they haven't had their meeting.
Yes, and what I would like to do, I'd like to throw out there is Mark West's letter. If you look at the, you know, the, he says, the last paragraph, basically, our comments and issues that were addressed. Item four and five, you know, the reconfig, reconfiguration of lots one through four reduces the wetland buffer impact, which is generally a good thing. And then signage along protected wetland buffer on lots one to four was also added on sheet A two. And proposed buffer adequately protects the adjacent wetland. You know, Mark works for us, and I know Mark personally, he's a very, very competent wetlands, environment, wetland scientist. But we don't know if the Conservation Commission agrees with that.
Right.
And, you know, I guess I, I'm just, I just have a hard time. I've been on, obviously, on your side, and I know you wanna get an approval. But I think we're in a position here where I would prefer to wait until we got comments from the Conservation Commission. Then if we decide to ignore their comments, at least we've had the comments and we've given them, or maybe we incorporate them, whatever, but at least we have, at least they're just not superfluous.
They at least have the opportunity to look over everything.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think from their point of view, from the developer's point of view, having that input makes their position as we make our decision, makes their position a lot more solid and less easy to question.
Right. Well, and the only other way that I'd be comfortable voting for it would be to, if we decide to vote for it, would be with the condition that, you know, if we get negative comments from the Conservation Commission, we need to open up the hearing again, which gets us nowhere. We might as well just wait, we might as well just wait for that. I think it could put you in a bad position if we approve it with a condition that subsequently gets not that.
Again, the only thing I would suggest is that the special use permit request for the wetland impact is, requires Conservation Commission comment. The hundred-foot buffer impact is not, in your, it's a regulatory waivable request. And also, it's only specific to the conservation subdivision. It's not, we're still abiding by your twenty-five-foot no-cut wetland buffer for your ordinance, so we're not asking for that. In fact, we're only asking for the hundred-foot conservation subdivision buffer impact. And in most cases, you can't even see the line as it involves, like, this is the hundred-foot buffer. What was that back relative to lot seven? Can't even see it relative to these lots were well away from it. So, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying.
You have four building lots that are all impacted by that.
Right, and I hear what you're saying.
And we've been through that before. That's a, it's a kind of an odd regulation that's only in the conservation subdivision. But it is, I guess it is what it is, and we'll have to work through it.
I mean, yeah, we, our preference would be that, you know, perhaps if, if, it sounds like you're gonna continue it anyway, so... But our preference would be that maybe we can dispense of some of the other housekeeping things beforehand, just other waivers.
I agree with that. Absolutely. I agree with that.
And if there's any other issues that you want us to address before we come back, we'd be great to just come back in November for that one issue.
Yep, I agree. I agree completely.
That makes sense.
Can I go from a...
Absolutely.
I know that this plan is dated the third. I think our meeting was after that, or on that date.
It was on the sixth.
So we were planning to add one of the markers on the, in between the, along that line on lot one.
Is there's gonna be a marker to add right here at the...
In the middle of that line, right. Okay, do you have that, right, Joe? It's not on this plane. Yeah, we're gonna add that one.
This was after, this was before the TRC made these plans.
And then we talked about, because, I'm miss, do, do you get a copy of staff recommendations to the applicant?
I just gave them one.
Yes, we have, yeah.
So I, I think what we would like to see there is, what I would like to see for discussion is on number fourteen on the first section.
Yes.
So I think it'd be good to include a reference to the required sprinkler systems in the deeds conveying the property to the subsequent owners in case a lot of these owners, in case a lot of the lots...
So have a reference in the deed.
Well, what happened is, because your plan is not to come in and build these houses, correct?
It's one option, just not...
Another option is to just sell the lots.
Correct.
Okay. And if they're selling lots individually, which is an option...
Okay. And if they're selling lots individually, which is an option, then you could have someone buy it, but they're never looking at the plan. The only thing the buyer's really looking at is the deed to their property.
Okay. So included in the deed for the correspond, deeds for the corresponding lots.
Correct. Number fif, add number 15, that the plan will show a 10-foot public easement along these, the existing trail from Dame Road to Lamprey Street. Talked about that earlier.
And also, number 16, that the plan will include a defined trail within the subdivision
to the existing woods road as shown on plan C1 and C2. So those woods roads show on the plan, and wherever you want to define your existing trail. You know, under the trail to connect from the, from the new road over to that woods road.
Sure.
Number 17, the applicant to place $1,000 in escrow account for appropriate plannings to be placed on the abutters property to minimize impact of, if I clear. To be determined within a one-year period.
And the money's to be determined too.
Well, she's saying that she's throwing out a thousand. We can talk about what you want, more or less or whatever, yeah.
I would say within a one-year period after road completion.
Yeah.
And then on the waiver request for section 3.14, at the end, I would state, again, for the public, this particularly, this particular waiver is that there's no cutting within this restricted area. I would just put comma, with exception of limited cutting for wells to be located within the buffer on lots two and three to meet any required 75-foot well protective radius from the leach field. Yeah, on that last one.
To carry forth Mark West.
Right. Because we know there will be some cutting
Yes.
within that no cuts zone, but specifically just for wells.
Right. Yeah, I included that in the other one, but, yeah, you're right.
I think those are my only comments. Oh, and the, on number four, Diane, I think at the end of that, because this is a condition, and be shown on the approved, and to be shown on the approved plan.
Number four?
Number four on Diane's recommendation, page one.
The permanent markers one?
Correct. So that these permanent markers that are being specified are as shown on these plans.
Can I just ask a question about 14 before we go
Sure.
Any further with that? I know at the, at our TRC meeting, it was made pretty clear that we were going to need some fire protection for the subdivision. And at the time, I was readily agreed to sprinkling the homes. I'm not going to, I'm going backwards on that. Diane's giving me the look, giving you the candy.
Could you, could you just go over to the microphone? I'm, I, maybe people at home can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Hoping that they can't, no. I was, I was, I was hopeful that there could be an option, so a note on the plan that was either the option of sprinkling or providing fire protection in accordance with the, with the fire department. So in other words, if we decide to do a cistern, we could do a cistern instead.
That to me is reasonable.
Gives us the option to work with the fire department on, on either or.
Yep. Yep. Great. The only caveat, I guess, on that would be, if you do a cistern, we're going to need to see it on the final as-built or something.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the record, for what's there.
And we might need easements, and we need to know where the location will be.
It'll probably be under the roadway, right?
We would also need details as to how it's going to be laid out. It's not that simple, just, I mean, it has to be designed.
Absolutely, yeah. So we'd have to provide specifications that would be approved by the fire department and what have you.
They can just come back for an amended site plan for that.
Yeah.
How does that affect your, the suggested
Deed?
Deed, yeah, deed label.
Yeah, Diane will rewrite this so that it's going to be the either or.
Okay.
If it's, if it's going to be individual fire suppression systems, then this will be required.
Must be on the deed, yeah.
I'm assuming you'll rewrite it.
John and I will probably write it together, but yes.
Does anybody else have any other comments? Val, do you want to start walking through some of these and?
Well, I think we can make a motion to, which I thought we already did, the minimum roadway width. We have not granted that way.
We waited, we wanted to wait for the engineer review to be complete and the recommendations.
So I, I know the TRC's comfortable with it. I, I would make a motion that with regards to the Jerem S. Anderson Trustee of Robin Realty, New Market Trust, Tuck Realty Corp., application for 36 Dame Road, tax map U2 lots 297 and 320 in the R1 zone. We grant the waiver from section 3.02, roads, fee subsection four of our subdivision regulations, to reduce the minimum roadway width from 24 feet to 22 feet with a two-foot shoulder.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of granting the waiver, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Then we grant that waiver, 5-2-0.
I mean, I'm happy to make a motion on the special use permit, but that's subject to getting the written approval of comments from the, so we probably should just deal with that on the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Just so that, I guess that's it.
That's the only waiver we can
That's it, okay. Alrighty, so
The applicant, all set with any other, Diane's comments?
I think we're good. Are you folks good with that solution? Just want to be sure they're good. I think we're good with the rest. Joe, do you have anything on Diane's comments that? Just reading them, of course, for the first time here.
Update the list for the next meeting.
So we're planning to meet with the Conservation Commission this week, hopefully, on Thursday.
Thursday night. Hopefully, we have, they should be getting us written comments after their meeting Thursday.
And I would throw out a suggestion that if there's, if there's a lot of angst based on their comments that between now and our meeting, try to get a meeting with you guys and Mark West and Diane, you and the TRC if they want to be involved with it, you know, try to walk through, but there's, there's things we can walk through if we need to, between now and then. So we can just keep it moving if necessary. Maybe their comments won't be too bad, and we'll just move on. Alright, anything else? If there are, if nothing, I'd like to get continuance, motion to continue?
Motion to continue the application.
To
To, the date is November 15th. We're not meeting on the 8th because of the election.
Might be more fun to meet than vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll see you on the 15th.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Really candy? Because you brought the candy?
Good candy, though.
From upstairs. The best candy ever. Every time I go to the office, I take that.
It's for you. I told her you
Thank you.
She's going to wear a costume.
With your trick-or-treat bag. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, next on the agenda. Maplewood and Vaughn Holding Company, LLC and NIP Lot 6, LLC. Continuation of a public hearing for an application for major site plan review at 2 Forbes Road, tax map R3 lot 9-6, 175 Exeter Road, tax map R3 lot 6, 177 Exeter Road, tax map R3 lot 7, 181 Exeter Road, all in the B2 zone. The project consists of constructing two new industrial buildings approximately 14,000 square feet and 20,000 square feet, along with a 12,000 square foot addition on the existing industrial lot on lot 9-6. So good evening again. So much like the last hearing, Diane, I'd like to just have you update us. I unfortunately missed the last TRC. Could you just give us an update on where we stand?
Yes. We did have a TRC on Thursday, October 6th. I also had the opportunity to meet with the Department of Transportation on Wednesday afternoon, at which the applicant and his engineer was present. And on that particular meeting, it was very clear from DOT that they are not ready to issue the driveway permit for this project, and they had some concerns about it. And they are reviewing it with their design division in Concord. And they indicated that they would be getting comments back to the engineers and the developers representative as soon as possible, which we hope will be in time for that in November 15th meeting. And at the TRC, we talked about the renderings, if you will, that were provided by the applicant. And myself and Rosie and Quox expressed some concerns about the elevations of the buildings, proposed buildings. And we questioned whether they met the intent of the planning board requirements that result are the, that are included in our architectural design review section of our site review regulations. And the applicant indicated that he would be going forward with his architecture this evening and provide some renderings, which I see we have, to show what the building might look like. And we went through some of the particular aspects of the design that didn't, we felt didn't meet the requirements of the town's regulations. So I think that's where we are, and the applicant's representative is here. And I guess would like to talk to the board about the design aspects of the facade. And I'll turn it over to you, Rob, if, if I may.
Yes, before Rob starts, I would like to, are we, are we done with the technical issues, drainage and things like that?
No, we have not yet finished our, the complete review, although Underwood Engineers has, you know, indicated they're basically in agreement with what's proposed. There was some concerns about the cross-sections that were presented. And the applicant's engineer is going to go back and provide iteration of cross-sections in response to Mr. McDonald's concerns.
Okay.
Just so I'm clear, so if I can follow him, we're having this deliberation. The, the site plan regs, or are we talking about because of, as far as the building, the architectural design and everything, is this relative to 108?
Yes, it is relative to 108.
And is it applying to all of the buildings?
Anything that's visible from Route 108, I think, I think is what the intent of the regulations were to minimize any adverse impacts on the corridor.
Okay. So Rob, before you start, what I'm hearing, is it technically drainage and stormwater, that kind of stuff, you're pretty close?
We are. We've addressed all of Phil McDonald's concerns. The last concern that we had outstanding was he just wanted us to further illustrate for the board the, the cross-section view from Forbes Road, which Joe's done, and we have that here for you tonight.
Okay.
Some of the angst of that is that it's, we're, we're just dealing with a terracing of the site as it moves down Forbes Road. And I'll let Joe go through that. I think it's pretty obvious. We've graded out from Forbes Road. We've tied our floor elevations to that grading for tractor-trailer circulation and all that loading. And to minimize retaining walls and that kind of stuff. So Joe has a cross-section plan to show you on that. I do have Mike Keen here this evening to go through some elevations and industrial buildings. We do build a lot of industrial buildings. We have a very good grip on what it costs to build them, what the market bears for rent, and it puts you in a box, so to speak, with being able to deliver viable industrial space. What he's going to show you this evening is essentially what is the state of the art in this type of panelized building. He does have a couple of options to go over. We'd like to hear some input from the board. We feel our, we all, we do have our alteration of terrain approval. We did, we were able to address the DOT's concerns about the slope. They had some concerns about the placement of a detention pond at the base and whether or not that water would saturate the slope, the base of the slope. We provided them the necessary materials for that. They've acquiesced to our report and that they've got what they need. We are still working on the issues out at the intersection.
Okay.
I thought we were further along than that. It seems that issue has gone sideways. We were led to believe very early on in the process that we would be making some compromises and doing the type of improvement that we propose. We went and purchased real estate based on that advice from the DOT. They've now gone sideways on that after eight months of waiting for them to process our permit. We're pretty disappointed with that interaction. We're still working hard to try and make something work. We, we have some suggestions in terms of getting some consensus with the municipality. Diane had some great ideas the other day about trying to incrementally improve it, get a design done, maybe get the road on the 10-year plan for DOT. I think that makes a lot of sense. We could talk about that some more this evening. But I think for now, what I'd like to do is to resolve these few outstanding issues so that when we come back here in November, the only thing that we're really dealing with is the, the resolution of that DOT drive permit.
Agreed. I think that's a good, good approach.
All right. So I'll start off with Mike Keen, and we can go over some of the architecture stuff. We do have an updated 3D that is meant to show the, how the building sits on the site and that the, how the landscaping will interact with the site. And I'll let Mike Keen take over.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Michael Keen, architect in New Market. What you have here on the board in front of you is basically a rendering of the plan that we had submitted to Diane for the, for what the building was going to look like as an industrial building. This is close to the animation that we saw the last time we were here in terms of the building height. And the building footprint, of course, hasn't changed at all. So if you recall, and we've got it here if you want to see it again, if you recall as we went by the site here, because the new grades are so much lower than 108, the front building is really the only one that you're going to see from 108 unless you're, you know, over the edge, right at the edge of the road, sort of looking down. You'll see the, you'll see the second of the two buildings that's being proposed, looking down at it from above.
Excuse me, can I interrupt your point there?
Sure.
Just for people at home, the first building, you're talking about the first building as it committed off of Forbes Road, the one at the corner of Forbes Road.
Right. Yeah, the larger the 20,000 square foot building. And this building is set down, I think it's approximately 10 feet at the lowest point, at the intersection of Forbes Road, 10 feet below that. And it's about a 26-foot building is what we're showing here for, for an industrial building. So half of it's sort of down in, below the slope anyway. So what we're showing here is, is basically, it's an industrial building. It's clad with structurally insulated panels. We're, we're proposing here that they just be a flat panel. It's not the corrugated panel that, that you might see at the racket club. This is a flat panel. We've built two of these in the New Market Industrial Park from scratch, and one that we just put an addition on and renovated the existing building using this panel. It's very energy efficient. I'm sorry, stratum. It's very energy efficient, it's low maintenance, and it's cost-effective. So it gives us insulation, interior and exterior finish within the industrial spaces, all in one package. So that's what we'd like to use. We understand that it doesn't meet the, the architectural standards along Route 108. This is a very difficult site in terms of the context. As you know, we're sort of, we've got houses on one side, new houses sort of down the street, the cemetery is behind us. We've got the racket club and the, and the golf course sort of down the street, even further into, into new fields. You know, you've got the, the storage facilities and stratum tire, which is set back, but still sort of industrial buildings. We've also got the industrial buildings down on Forbes, Forbes Road that we need to sort of work within context of. So we thought this was the, the best approach to put in a modern, low-maintenance building that would meet the market for industrial space. This isn't retail space. They're not going to be able to rent it at retail space rents. So we really need it to be as, as cost-effective as possible. There's a couple of other options here where we had looked at lowering the front section of the building, which is oftentimes office space, and that's kind of what we've got in the Stratum Industrial Park, a lower front section and, and the taller back section. What we found in doing that, looking at the animation, is by lowering that front section down, the roof became more prominent. Because now we've dropped that roof back down closer to eye level. So that was a little bit of a concern with us. And then the third option is we look at that with the step down, and we just started to make some color changes to try to break up the mass of the building a little bit. It still won't meet your architectural standards. We really feel as though what most of those standards call for in terms of finished materials and things like that are really too expensive to install in this size building initially, and far too difficult to maintain or to detail properly. I mean, if we just took this box and put calabrods on it, it's not going to look much better than the building that we've better than the building that we've got here now, which is sort of true in its intent. It's a modern industrial building, and we're hoping that by having it lower to this, to the street on 108 at least, that it lowers, lowers the impact of the mass of the building. Take a quick couple of looks at those. This is the building that was presented in flat elevation, Diane. This is looking at it from 108, looking southbound. And this is just the opposite corner from Forbes, looking in this way. It's about 26-foot high section here. We're showing mechanical screens around whatever mechanical equipment is up there. That would all be based on whatever the end user ultimately puts in, the height of that mechanical screen, so that we wouldn't see any of that rooftop equipment. It's basically set up, the intent that there might be two tenants in there, so we've put the entrances in the center. We've got a little bit of a loophole behind this to find those entrances. But that way, if it gets subdivided down the middle, you've got the two sections of the building here. We're showing this much more storefront than you'd normally get in an industrial park, partly to give it a little bit of a retail feel, or in the event that some user came in and had a retail component, that this would be set up for that. So again, this is the most prominent elevation from 108. We've got lots of glass in there, it's continuous string of glass before you turn the corner, glass going down the side, and then as the road starts to climb up, that's where you start to get back into the sort of large expansive right. So here's the first option, again, sort of sticking with a monochrome building, but stepping down the front section of it. And this is where we're concerned now that this roof starts to get to be much more prominent as you're starting to climb the grade on 108. But it breaks up the mass of the building a little bit. We've still got the retail component. It breaks the building down into its two components, office slash retail, and the industrial section in the back. And now we looked at simple color changes to see what that would do for us, to see if that helped break up the mass a little bit more. Again, it's the step-down section, and we just changed the tones of the color of the building as it went from the low section to the high section. This is a fairly accurate representation of the landscaping that's being shown on the landscape plan. So we're able to see sort of this, again, the screening that's being provided by the vegetated buffers along both roads. Combination of evergreens and some deciduous.
So that's a steel frame building with composite panels? Is that basically what those are?
Yeah, it's a metal panel, generally probably about two and a half or three inches thick, depending upon the insulation value that we're looking for. So it would have rigid foam insulation in the core, a metal face on the inside and a metal face on the outside. Every three or four feet, there'd be a seam, so it'd be a fairly faint shadow line. If you're back 100 feet or so, you barely see it.
So if I went to stratum?
Stratum Industrial Park.
Industrial Park, I'd see a similar style building?
What's the name of the building?
The H.D. Smith Building, which I think is Fort Maran Way, maybe?
H.D. Manning?
H.D. Smith.
Oh, Smith.
Yeah. Just before you get to that, that's on your right as you go in. The building just before that on the right, which is Two Marin Way, that's, it's two or three different tenants now, that has a similar panel in gray. And then if you went down a little bit further and set back, embrown, we put a large addition on that and actually took what was the original concrete block building with metal, corrugated metal face, similar to what the buildings are in the industrial park here. We actually peeled the corrugated off and covered the, covered the block with the same panel.
Yeah, go ahead.
Michael, can you explain the pavement system I'm looking at here? Am I, am I actually on 108?
Yes.
Driving?
108 right here, and Forbes Road's down.
So this is the proposed landscaping along Forbes Road, and then there's a parking lot in front of the building behind that landscaping?
Yes.
So you made the comment that this will not be used for retail space, and then you made the comment about the glass, that a tenant may later want to use this for retail space. So are you really trying to have a building that has an image from 108 for potential retail?
Our expectation is that it's going to be an industrial building. We're kind of hoping that we either have an office or retail component with it that we put in this front section, which sort of justifies the glass so that we don't end up with just this big warehouse box arrangement in there. If it had a retail component, hopefully the retailer might come in with their own brand identity and maybe change the, change the design of the building a little bit, and that's something that we defer to Rob, but I'm sure that they'd bring that back to you if it changed radically from what you see here. We'd bring that back to you for your, for your review.
Maybe this is a question for Rob. If, if we were to be inclined to waive some of the requirements, or most all the requirements under this section of our regulation, would you have any issue if a condition of that waiver was to actually completely buffer the entire visual from 108 of that building? Because I look at this and I say, it's being set up for retail.
Okay, so let's take a step back, because I want to make sure that we, Mike's using the term retail interchangeably really in a building design, but what we're really talking about is, for example, we have Exeter Rentall in the park down at the old vinyl building. They have a storefront, which is essentially their tables on display and chairs on display, but they run a warehouse operation. The Granite Group over in Exeter, they run a plumbing supply warehouse. It's an industrial warehouse. They do have a parts counter. People do walk through the front door. And that is a retail transaction. It's a commercial purchasing transaction, but it's not a retail tenant like Walgreens or?
Hannaford.
Hannaford.
They have the bathroom design center there and everything.
Right.
They have all their signage to invite the public into that.
Correct. And so we do think that that has value in terms of that people would, that could help us attract an industrial tenant who might have that component in their business model and wants to be in New Market and would like to have some visibility. It doesn't, it doesn't really change how the building construction is done. I would say if the, it is important to us to have some visibility, what we're, but if, but if the building converted, let's say, to a retail user, this is not the building we would build. There's no retail users that, we've had the site out to every retail user you can think of and have not been able to get anybody to take it, but just, just the same. This type of 26-tall warehouse building, it's very specific industrially. It's not what you would build for a strip tenant in a retail use.
Because they don't need a 26-foot-high ceiling.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. These are, the, there is a very rigid and specific formula to be able to attract industrial users in New Hampshire. The rents are, there are ceilings in the rent that are very low in terms of getting them to operate. Everything goes into that formula for them when they locate, and it's tax rate, it's building costs, it's cost to operate, all of those things. We have kind of developed a formula with Mike over the years of a construction formula where we have certainly leaned towards, we want to make sure our construction costs are within the margin. We want to make sure that their operating costs in terms of our energy, that's the main reason we go to this insulated panel. It's very efficient, and they, they can come up and run their business and operate with a lot of big, without a lot of overhead. And, and that's what it takes to get industrial tenants for this type of manufacturing, light industrial, any of those users. You have to have that formula. You just can't, you just can't pull them out of Seacoast towns. You can't pull them out of Manchester where they can go rent buildings for $4 a square foot.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Everybody's thinking. Val, to your point, I look at that, though, and I see virtually impossible to buffer that from 108 because of the intersection. You know, you could, you could buffer the 108 corridor, so if you're driving up and down 108, but if you come to that intersection going south and look, look left because of Forbes Road, you will see that facade.
If I may just point out that this, this rendering is sort of taken from a little bit higher than eye level, because we did want to be able to see the building. We knew that was going to be the issue. You drop this down to eye level, you lose some of the building. So if you, if you wanted to see the animation again, sort of more at eye level, you could certainly take a look at that. We think that the landscaping really does screen much more of it when you're down at eye level. This is probably up at about 10 or 12-foot eye level compared to what would normally be a five or six-foot eye level.
The, the top pieces, I don't know the architectural term.
That's a mechanical, the mechanical screen.
You are screening the mechanicals.
Yes, yeah.
So is that block, just as we see it? It's a solid block screening?
No, that would be more metal panel, just wouldn't be insulated, but it'd be metal panel that matches the building. That's just sort of a fence that goes around.
So it gives it another roof level, basically?
Yes, yeah. And that, the height of that would be dependent upon whatever equipment is in there. Obviously, if the equipment's larger for whatever the industrial is, we'd have to make that taller to screen that out.
And why, Michael, do you just, why is the perception here that this is less, that this is more roof, your comment about that? I look at this and feel like it's less of an industrial building than the first rendering you showed.
Yes, this is less of an industrial building. Yeah, by having the steps.
You mentioned something about the roof.
By having the steps. It's not, it's not less industrial, but the roof becomes more prominent.
More prominent.
The lower roof becomes more prominent as you climb up 108, because you're starting to get up higher than, you actually get up higher than the roof as you start to look down on it. So. Any mechanical, we'd probably have, not be able to locate in a mechanical.
Right. So you're saying looking on top of the roof as opposed to into?
Into the side of the building.
It steps down visually, so it's a better look.
Right, right. But that is a concern. I know that rooftop equipment's a concern in town, too, so that's something we'd have to manage. Probably wouldn't be able to get any rooftop equipment up there, or we'd have to add another level of screen, which might not be the worst thing either, because then we just add some more interest to the roof line.
Yeah, because this gives a lot, to me, a lot more interest in roof line, even if you're coming in both directions.
Can we go back?
Because the road comes down.
Can we go, go back to the original?
Yeah, that to me just looks like the box.
Right.
Reminds me of Norcross, Georgia.
Is that good or bad?
That's bad.
I don't like the gray tones myself.
It was good when it was built.
Everyone has their own opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, just looking at it, and I don't see where, now what building is that?
It's the same one, just looking at it from.
That's with the gray.
That's just a gray tone.
You're looking at it from the opposite direction, looking at it from Forbes, coming out of Forbes now.
With the, with the lower roof and the front still.
And color, I mean, we've got, there's color options with these panels, and they can even be painted, so. That definitely looks nicer.
That's why there's aesthetics.
Well, that's why.
Leech is on.
Hold on one second. For, for the record, Roseanne showed up at 8:22, so needs that, because she can't tell sometimes on tape. Go ahead, Roseanne.
A quick question. At the TRC meeting, they said they were going to continue. They turned the TV on to find him here, so.
I got an email today from Rob saying he wanted to come and present some improved facade renovations.
So they're just, we're just looking at them tonight. They're not looking for any waivers for anything like that.
I don't think we're going to do anything tonight other than discuss a lot of.
Okay, just discuss, okay, good.
What we had was an elevation plan, and what they're showing is a 3D perspective. It gives us a better feeling of what the building will look like as it fits into the landscape.
Okay.
Well, I think the other point about, from an architectural perspective is you want to have some kind of transition when you're dealing with, you know, so we've got the industrial park there. We have very much industrial buildings. To me, it would look very out of character to have an 18th or 19th century building next to an industrial building.
I don't think anyone suggests.
No, but our regulations, they talk about historic New England architecture, but that's not what's going on down there. So how do you, how do you bring some architectural elements into it, which is, I think, what Michael has done here, that is transitional, you know, to the highway, basically?
And buffering.
And buffering to the next ones.
You don't want to wait or whatever, the higher. Is this the same intent for all three buildings? Or is this, I mean, this is obviously the most visible. The other ones?
Well, these, these two are the new buildings. This one is in addition to the existing building.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
But you don't see that one?
This one would probably either tie in with the existing building, or if they decided to make a wholesale change, like they did at Embrown, probably go with this panel.
I guess the question I'm asking, though, is, is the architectural approach the same for all three? I assume it is.
Yeah, the, for the second building in, the one that is the least visible, in fact, it's completely below the grade. And keeping in mind, our original concepts for this, when we sat down with DOT, and our original design concepts were buildings that were at grade on 108.
Yeah.
And so the idea was, hey, let's get them down to go off of Forbes Road and use as much of that buffering as we can to make them more part of the industrial park than up on 108, which obviously makes sense, and it works in the development. The second building in, we likely would, we would probably just do the square building in that site.
Yeah, okay.
For two reasons. One, we don't know who that user is yet. We can get a user in there that's 50% office, though, and that would change this building significantly. So we set up typically for 90/10, and in an extreme case, we see 80/20, unless we have a user that's really an office user. So, but that does happen. I prefer the stepped roof line as well. I think that definitely gives a building some interest, and obviously the color changes.
Go ahead, Diane.
I'm just, I'm going to, Roseanne didn't see it, so I'm just going to flip back to the stepped building that doesn't have the color change.
Oh, go ahead. Diane, can I ask a question, will you?
Yeah, I just want to understand, you call it a step building, I want to understand the logic behind that.
Show the first one, Michael.
Yeah, the first one is very boxy, obviously.
This one, we maintain the same roof line all the way around this one.
It was 108, to the right?
It was right here.
That's right there, okay.
This is Forbes Road.
That's Forbes, okay.
So this is, this is the plan, basically, that you had in 2D elevation that we looked at.
And that's 26 feet high, the whole roof?
Yep. Same building, just looking at it from the opposite corner. And this one, we're still staying monochrome in the color, whatever color we end up with, but in this case, the front section of the building has dropped down. I think we went to 18 feet here. Here, we maintain 14 feet in the front section. So the roof's stepped down, so that's why I'm calling it stepped.
And what's the highest part of the roof, the height on that?
This is still 26, and then the mechanical screens, these are shown at four feet, but depending upon the height and the mass of whatever mechanical equipment is up there, that may need to, may need to get taller.
I agree.
Is there any chance that you could possibly get a tenant once, once the site is well-defined, and you might have to change the size of the building? Either higher?
It would be pretty rare to be, to go taller than these buildings in this environment and at these sizes. That would be a very specific user. But these are kind of the heights that we're building, and these are what are the, what the industry norm is, what, essentially what's being called for in warehouse spacing. It's all driven by rack sizes and forklifts and all that kind of stuff. So this is, this is what the, the industry standard is in terms of a product for delivery.
Okay. Well, and if you deviate from design, that would have to come back to site plan review?
If it's a substantial change.
If these designs are submitted as part of the application?
If it's a substantial change, then yeah, we'd have to come back for revision to the approved site plan.
And we'd be happy to do that. I mean, if we have minor changes, that kind of thing, I'm sure we can do that with the planning department building, but, and then also, and obviously, if we, for some reason we got a specific retail user, yes, we would definitely be coming back. Our site would, our site plan would likely change.
So I mean, I, I like the idea, I like the concept. I think we do need robust plantings along Route 108. I know you proposed some there. You know, I'm not a planting expert by any stretch of the imagination, but I think a good buffer with some nice landscaping would be nice. I understand the conundrum you're in of being basically in an industrial park with the market for basically industrial buildings. So I guess I'll throw it out to the planning board. How do we want to move forward as far as, you know, the regulations as far as architectural? Do we, you know, there's a lot to talk about, I imagine, as waivers to grant. Val, what would you, what would you, how would you want to see this process work through? Diane?
Now, I, I personally feel insecure about making recommendations on architectural design. I'm not an architect, I'm not a design professional, I'm not a landscape architect, and I And I believe that this project is perhaps one that might warrant having a third party be hired to work for the planning board to help facilitate this process and to help bring some ideas to the table to help make the facade more consistent with what the intent of our Route 108 architectural design regulations call for. And, and I have been in touch with a landscape architect. Jeff Highlander, who's a landscape architect with Ironwood, his office is here in Newmarket. He's in the Mills. And he's formerly was on the planning board in Stratum and worked with the planning board in Stratum to develop gateway design standards to help create more of a a town center, if you will, and gateway concept for Stratum. And there's been a couple of buildings that have been constructed under those new guidelines, and if you take a tour of Route 108 in Stratum, you'll find that there's some really nicely designed buildings along Route 108 that really kind of echo the so-called New England tradition with, you know, more gables and gables facing the street and more architectural detailing that kind of defines the architecture of the area and the historic character of the, the town and the region. And I think that, you know, I personally think we need help in going through this process to help come up with something that we can all live with and come up with a reasonable compromise. And I just would recommend that perhaps we consider hiring Mr. Highlander to help facilitate that process. He has given me a, a proposal which I have provided the planning board with. And I don't see that the, the cost data has been provided. I can get that to the planning board.
Val, what are your, what are your?
And I just, I mean, we do this for engineering. We do this for wetlands evaluations and I'm throwing it out as a consideration to the planning board, given the complexities of making this fit into the landscape to do justice to that corner, which is now, you know, we've done, we've had some major improvements with the golf course property. And we, you know, I think we need to be thinking about what is our gateway and do everything we can to preserve it and protect it. And I can get the details for you on the costing if you'd like me to.
Well, before we get there, let's.
They didn't get printed.
Let's just suck it through. But, Val, what are your, what are your thoughts?
Well, I look at it in the context of the industrial park, and this is the entrance to the industrial park off of 108. I think it's, I also look at it in context from a location standpoint relative to the health club, and then we've got the cemetery, so we don't, we're glad about her. But again, I look at this as how do we have an attractive building that is the entrance to the industrial park? And that it is also consistent with some type of transitional architecture to what is in the industrial park? So my personal opinion about this in my position as, as a planning board member is that I don't believe that Section 3.21, I would not have an issue of waiving 3.21 relative to this site. That would be my position. And I don't, personally, I don't, and you can have a different opinion. That's okay.
Is that the, is that the runaway architectural?
The runaway architecture. If they were proposing this on North Main Street, I would have a different, you know, opinion. But I think where we are, we do talk about it as a gateway. Again, I think that this is, this is, to me, is an attractive building. I think they've done a nice job with that it not being like a, you know, the same as the industrial buildings, and it is a transitional, you know, feature to it. I think landscaping will be extremely important. I wouldn't be looking to, you know, waive, you know, some of the landscaping sections of our, of our regulations. But I think that the applicant has done a good job to really think about this as a gateway to the industrial park. And relative to coming south on 108, you're really not going to see a lot of this building given these elevation plans that we had presented to us in a prior meeting. And I think a lot of that section of 108 can be very buffered on the, along 108 itself as opposed to along Forbes Road. So I think that we can achieve the intent of our regulation relative to buffering as opposed to having something on Main Street or North Main Street where it really is about the architecture because of what's around it.
That's your opinion, though?
That's my.
Jane, what are your thoughts?
I see where we did the golf course, it was very important to know how that looked to Diane's point about the entrance. I just want to make sure that we keep that philosophy kind of moving forward.
Which was all about the landscape, but it was also a requirement of that approval of the buffering along 108.
Right, I agree. Yep.
Which I don't believe got achieved, because you definitely drive south on 108 and see right into all the houses. Which was not, in my mind, when I approved that and voted to approve.
Yep, I agree.
That that was going to be the case.
Yep, no, I, I, I definitely agree with you on that.
So I think coming, you know, south, you know, so north on 108 to the long 108 should be very well buffering.
Yes, I agree with that.
And as far as the architecture?
Oh, I, I, I agree. I believe the step, I guess the correct verbiage is, is the one that's more attractive for, for my eyes.
Okay, Rosie?
The step one is more attractive compared to what you were given in the first place, which was a box. Okay? The golf course across the street was developed, supposed to be under open space. Open space, you're not supposed to see any of the homes. There are other homes that exist there now. I could not and would not use the the Athletic, Great Bay Athletic. I wouldn't use that as a comparison. It's buffeted a lot between this project and the cemetery. So you drive in the left side, you've got the golf course. You've got the new subdivision. And, you know, today, driving back and forth to Exeter, I noticed, because we had talked at the TRC about the, the new gateway regs down there and that new Subaru building. And I noticed it, I've been there a few times. I noticed it, but today I looked to the left and to the right, going back and forth, and the other buildings are just the plain, flat boxes. And there is no comparison to the Subaru. And I realize it's just an industrial park. But before anybody does any projects, they know what's required. They know we had 3.21. They knew what the architectural requirements were. And, you know, just like we've got that ugly Eames sign right down here with those awful colors. We have them siding the place. I don't know if that beautiful front facade of that building is with all that gingerbread shingle is going to be covered. I mean, how many things are we going to lose in town? To, to lose the character of the town and, and give waivers out? They knew that they had the requirements, and I think especially on that last building, they should be made to adhere to them. I, I, I am not in favor of any waivers at all. The other new building is down lower and in the park, so you're not going to see much of that anyway. And the other one, it's just in addition, the third one in. And then there was even a question about how much of a buffer. Remember, we were concerned there was supposed to be a berm with the buffer. And that, I think, is almost gone away too. So now you're losing a lot of whatever you can hide with landscaping as well. So a, a good berm buffer with adequate landscaping, not deciduous evergreen, so you don't lose the leaves and see the tops of the buildings, especially the new second building, so you don't see all the mechanics. And that last building has to have architectural. I just, you know, we're ruining the town in bits and pieces. We put too much time and money. It looks beautiful downtown and to do that.
Okay, that's, that's valid. It's your opinion?
I'm going to, I'm going to sound like a broken record on this, but I, you know, I think that they, I, I do like that design better, and I'm with you, you know, from trying to figure out how you transition from the sports club over to, to a more New England style is a tough thing. I, I think the challenge I've got is I consider that area right there sort of disconnected from the rest of the town on a couple of different levels. It's very hard. I, I love the pedestrian aspect. I love the bike aspect that we've got in this town. And my concern is, is that we will sort of disconnect the south part of the town from the north part of the town if we don't as part of maybe granting some concessions, look at, you know, look at some, some pedestrian and bike options through that area right through there.
It's no, no, we can't, we do any of that.
That's fine. I just say, yeah, but I mean, it's.
One point two million dollars and we had to cancel the project. The, the town did not want to go forward with spending the additional funding to make the project happen, so.
So what do you think? Let's try to, yeah, and let's try to, relative to the architecture, because this is where.
The architect is saying that, that, you know, when I've looked at architectural things like this in other places in other parts of the country, there's paths, there's trees, there's screening, there's texture to it. He's done a good job on the screening and the texture, and I think that, you know, that they're, you know, my, my other thing that you'll hear me a broken record on, the pedestrian aspect to it.
Okay, let's, let's, for the time being, keep the pedestrian access out of it. That's, that's, it's a valid discussion, but.
Because there's no pedestrian access there. There's no bike route or anything.
Nothing it connects it to.
Yeah, so that has no.
But I'm trying to just come up with a way we move this project forward. Are we going to grant waivers? Are we not going to grant waivers? Is, you know, we're, that sounds like the technical stuff we're there. We need to resolve the the building. So it sounds like you're okay with the building proposed.
I'm sorry, yeah, I, I mean, it, it looks, it looks good, yeah.
How would you like to look at that if you lived across the street in the new development? Would you like to see that every day? Or would you like to see a little, a few more enhancements?
Rosie, whoa, 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 whoa.
I mean, really.
And I, I don't mind answering that question. I mean, is that, it, it, again, you've got an area that right now is a little bit of a, a transitional desert. And you've got, we've got to figure out how to get from where it is now to something better. And, and I feel that meets that. I think there's some other things they could do, but, you know, as far as that, I think that's a, an improvement over what it is today.
Okay, Amy. Thank you. Amy?
I'm, I'm a little bit torn because I can see all sides of everybody's opinion, so, and I don't disagree with everybody's opinion. I can see that we do need to keep the architecture of the town and, and, you know, I understand that and I agree with part of that, but at the same time, I also see that this is the entrance to an industrial park, and I'm wondering if with the landscaping that could be a, a huge key to, you know, buffering that, or, you know, making that look nice. Now, I'm, what I'm wondering, and I don't know, because I want everybody to be able to work through this, is if there's anything else on, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm not, you know, if there's anything else that we can pull in to just make it look a little bit more with, in line with the town, and I don't know what that would be. I'm just.
Everybody, the 108 architectural review that we have in our ordinance.
I understand that, but I'm also saying that I'm not hard pressed to say an absolute no. We have to stick to this because it is an industrial park entrance and it is kind of a, you're flowing into town and kind of keep that flow from the kind of newer architecture into the historical architecture. Does that make sense?
Yeah, go ahead, Val.
No, I didn't, I didn't want, after Amy's finished.
Yeah, I'm, yeah. So I don't know. Maybe somebody to help us with that is the right way to go.
Yeah, okay.
Can, can you explain from the proposed site plan what the actual distances that you would be able to retain line of sites from Forbes Road, but the distance between 108 and the proposed building and parking areas along 108? What is that actual, what's the width of that that would be available for, for real landscaping?
Well, it might be beneficial, and just for the record, I'm Joe Perchino from Time Line. It might be beneficial to help with this is some of the cross-sections that we did. It was actually the only outstanding item that the review engineer had was asking for additional cross-sections, and that will, brought some with me tonight. I can hand them out, and this will kind of give you guys some sense of perspective into the site. And it's going to be the three D.
I think, I think we should look at the cross-sections.
Yeah, I'll set that up while you're doing that.
Three D.
Is it okay if I plug in?
Fine, go ahead.
Oh, good.
That's a great idea. We can do both.
Are these the cross-sections? I think we have these.
We have.
What date do you have, Joe?
So he has new ones.
He has new ones.
This is going to be a little both. You guys might already have those ones, and then we get two more since Thursday.
Thursday.
So that third one since Thursday are on the back. We can discuss. And I'll briefly go over all of them to give you guys a sense of where everything is and how it's located. I think they're pretty simplistic cross-sections, and I'll just block buildings and parts of the parking area, and then essentially the arrays along the route. So this first cross-section, you guys want to kind of follow along, this is cross-section AA. This upper one here. This is from Route 108 on the right-hand side. Goes down the slope to this, the midway point between the building. We have two drives into the, this property, into this building's property, which we have a parking lot on the north side and another loading area on the south side of the building, which is actually four feet lower, so you can have a loading dock in the back. So essentially, that shows the building at elevation eighty-four, and then that point on Forbes Road halfway between both drives is about, oh, eighty-three point five, so essentially almost the same elevation as, as the building. As you go lower to that lower parking area, this, this lower entrance is actually lower than the building, and this upper entrance is a little bit higher than the building, but then it goes down into the parking area to the ad rate. The second.
Joe, can you just repeat again?
Yep.
What is the elevation I'm at at 108, and what's the elevation of the top of the building?
So the elevation.
On, just on Building A?
It's just on Building A. So the elevation on 108 at this point is approximately elevation ninety-eight or so. The finished floor of the building is eighty-four. We're showing on this a twenty-two foot high building, I think, but.
Twenty-four.
Yep, so, yeah, twenty-four foot high building, so this would be a little bit two, two foot higher. It ends up going to be the twenty-six foot high, which is almost imperceptible at the scale.
So it will be about twelve feet above 108?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
So from a driver, it will be about?
And that's, and that's at this halfway point. So, you know, at the intersection of Forbes Road, it might be a little bit more than twelve, and then, you know, this corner, as you're coming north on Route 108, it's actually going to be a little bit lower, well, lower than twelve.
And approximately, how far off of Route 108 is the building?
It's about, again, that varies, but I think we're about fifty feet off the right-of-way and then another twenty-five feet or so beyond that to the edge of pavement. So you're probably, or to the tramway, so you're probably about seventy-five feet or so back at this, at this corner
Yep.
from the pavement, and then up here, you're a little bit closer than that.
Okay.
So the landscaping we're actually showing on the property side of the right-of-way line or the, the three-line right-of-way line, which would occur essentially on that top of that slope. There is a little bit of a berm there. We're just going to be grating right from the property line, so we're going to keep in that swale into this county along 108. And we do that the whole way through. That berm gets a little bit bigger for this, for this next cross-section, as you can see. And then, per CC, it's about the same. But again, that's just keeping existing grade out there until we hit the right-of-way line, so we're not grating beyond that into the right-of-way. We're grating right from the backside of it down.
So what's the distance, because you don't want to get into the right-of-way, correct? That's what you're saying. And what is the distance from the edge of the right-of-way to the point at which you would stop planting? What, what's the width of the planting area?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, so the top of the planting area is going to be about, what do we have? Let's give. It's going to be, it's going to be a planting area at the top of the berm, maybe five to six feet or so, and then down this level of it as well.
So the top of the berm is about six feet wide?
Well, on the, on the, on our side of the property, on the project side of the property, if you will.
Because you can't, you won't do anything in the right-of-way.
You don't want to.
Right. So from the edge of the right-of-way, you can still meet your line of sight distances if you start planting at the edge, and you can come in six feet.
And we start grating down this.
And then you grain down. And then you grade down and you can plant along that grade, correct?
We could, but we're not showing that because it's a two-to-one slope, difficult to maintain.
So you really have six feet of planting area.
So what we're showing along that area is a number of different plants, evergreen and essentially arborvitae and I believe the other one is spruce, if I can look that up.
There's white spruce and there's...
Precythia.
Thanks. So then Precythia around the corner and then we have some deciduous trees over here which are...
Doesn't go all the way down.
Right.
Does it see it more in that detail, Diane?
This is the old landscape berm and there were quite a few plantings that were...
Right, that old landscape berm, but we should back up for a second too. So that was a different part of the site because this has now incorporated the lots that were along Route 108. That old berm shows this section of the old property where we had this building kind of out, out here. So it's kind of like, that was gorgeous.
But, but the concept was you were just going to buffer 108. You're going to drive along 108, you're going to drive into town, south on 108, you're not going to see any buildings. That was the original concept.
Right. And now the concept is you will see Building A, let's call it. Building B, which we're showing here, is going to be below Route 108 again. And then Building C is much further back because this used to be a 24,000 foot, 24,000 square foot addition now to 12,000, much further back and much lower. So as you're driving, and Mike's going to give us the little, the little video if you guys want to do that now or you can finish walking through the cross-sections, but this will help to give you a perspective of what you will see as you drive up and down 108. That's, that's...
That's the way I drive.
Rosie, can you see? We can scoot over.
I'm, I'm going to just walk over here and make a difference.
See if it doesn't get deep.
It's good. Different voice.
Right, they're showing really large...
But go ahead. Sorry, Michael.
Should be Ryan, just going to catch up.
This is on 108, hon?
This is driving, not driving, not Forbes Road.
Oh, okay.
It'll get to the end of Forbes Road, then it'll swing around, drive up 108 to the top of the hill, turn around and come back.
This is the stepped building.
This is the stepped building monochrome, right?
You're really going to put 30-foot trees in front?
Someday it will get to that height. So those are just the fascythias along the edge here, which are, you know, shrubs. And then here you...
White spruce.
So there's just that one single line of, of, you can't stagger. You can't do the tree stagger for the trees.
I could talk to my landscape architect about, but I think the perspective that we're trying to show here is that it's, regardless of what you want to plant on it, you're not going to see those lower buildings. And what elevate, what height are you at, Mike?
Right now, we're at about six feet.
Okay. So that will buffer the, you won't be able to see lower building. And the idea here was that you transition to a lower landscaping so that you will be able to have some visibility of the building in the corner so that you can, again, if it's a retail, part retail establishment, you know, I don't know, shoe warehouse and they want to sell shoes out front, you'd be able to say, oh, there's Clarks.
Oh, absolutely. You, you want the, some, some visibility for something like that.
So that's where we have that break and then you, and then you take the corner and you'll be able to see it.
And what are those other green log grown shrubs around that, between the fascythias?
I will break that, I'll let you tell it. Mike, you know off the top of your head.
I don't recall.
But I...
I don't recall.
I know all the, the abbreviations in Latin, but I don't...
Because fascythias is basically just a weed bush, very inexpensive, very messy. I'm going to look at, they're a nuisance.
They're pretty in the spring.
Huh?
Pretty in the spring.
Yeah, in the spring, and for like a week. They are har, it's a weed, it's a weed shrub. Something like a golden thread cypress evergreen would be stunning there.
All right, so we have, we have...
Are you saying you would be okay with the waiver if they did the landscaping?
No, no, and then we will start, we're starting with the landscaping.
Yeah, so we have Arctic fire dogwood and New Hampshire gold precythia.
No, lose them both and I might, I'll go to the nursery.
You're going to get her a one.
What specifically is to lose their leaves?
You're going, you're going to lose the leaves all along that side because they're all deciduous and you're going to see nothing but branches. Papers are going to get stuck. Let me tell you, fascythia is a weed shrub. It's not a foundation planting. If you want to enhance that building and really make it look nice, those aren't the shrubs to do it with. Golden thread weeping cypress.
All right, so...
And...
Okay.
And what, what size arborvitae and stuff are you going to put along 108?
I believe they're called for six and eight feet.
Yep, I can, I can get you the specifics on that.
So let me tell you why you guys are talking about that. I'm the only one who hasn't really given my opinion.
Eight to 10 foot high.
Surprisingly. I don't like any of it. I actually like the building step back. I like that roof line a lot better. I understand our regulations about the architecture. I don't believe that this location warrants going to that level of architecture. I think what else, if we, if we demand that, then all we're going to do is assure that site doesn't get built on.
Correct.
For the purposes here. It's an industrial park and it's in a kind of a no man's land with the, the tennis courts and gym are, are, they're there. You know, that, that building's been there for as long as I've been in town. It probably will be long after I'm gone. What I think I would like to see though is a little bit more robust landscaping. And I understand you don't want to block, you know, the, the side of the building. But I, I'm okay with waivers for architecture and then maybe even, Mr. King, maybe there's some things you can do to the building to give it a little bit better flair, some, I, I don't know. I don't know what, what, what's possible, but I think a little bit more robust landscape would go a long way, especially along 108. I think if you staggered the arborvitae's to kind of basically make a wall there like, I guess the, the best example is the corner of Squam Scott Road there.
Yeah.
108, you know, that house there has those six there. Something similar to that that would block those.
Yeah. So if you take a right, there's the house right there, they put essentially a wall.
Catches all the cars.
So the size, just so someone asked a question, the size of the arborvitae was seven to eight feet, which is the initial planting.
Yeah.
Eight to 10-foot-high white spruce and Colorado lose boost. So they are, they're not the, they're not the little trees, they're, they're good sized, nursery grown trees.
And they grow pretty good too.
And they grow pretty good and pretty quick.
I would say though that as far as landscaping goes, I'm not a landscaper. I actually have a ton of fascythia in my yacht. I love fascythia.
Oh, I love them. I, I love fascythias, but not for this application.
But I would have no problem if, if we wanted to have somebody help us with the landscaping. I'm not interested in having somebody, I don't think we need the help with the building itself. I mean, that's a matter of personal opinion as a landscaper is, but I don't mind having a landscape architect help us with a robust landscaping plan.
And we, I mean, in-house have a landscape architect that prepared this plan.
Okay.
So we have the expertise to do this.
Okay, yeah.
It's just feedback from this board and, you know, how much the developer's going to be able to spend.
Understood, understood.
So rather than hire, I mean, just suggestion, rather than hire the landscape architect to come and give additional opinion.
Well, I, I...
Well, it's, it's the same as us, as Diane pointed out, we hire our own engineer.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I think what I would, what I would suggest is, yeah, you have a landscape architect, have your landscape architect look at this again, maybe...
Because you're looking at it from a different perspective.
Different lens, right.
We're looking at it from how do we buffer this from 108?
Nobody here is qualified, except maybe Roseanne...
I am.
...to critique a landscaping plan and I don't feel comfortable. If, if my decision is based on, you know, the landscape is going to look really nice, I, I want somebody to tell me that's going to look nice, that's working for us. That's my opinion. And I don't think that's the end of the world. That shouldn't be a, a heavy lift.
And I want someone to tell us that whether, nice, not nice, I like the Eames sign, sorry. Right? That's what the deal is, is aesthetics.
Yes.
I want someone to say that the landscaping meets our regulation.
Yes.
Okay, we're supposed to be voting relative to regulations and whether or not we want to waive the regulation because they can provide the request for the waiver that, you know...
And I mean, I, I don't, I don't mind doing waivers, but I don't want to waive the whole damn ordinance. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's an expense and they, and it's, it is an industrial park and everybody uses the excuse because of the athletic club down the street that we should keep the same thing going. So if we keep that going up here and then someone comes in a few houses down and says, well, you kept it there at the industrial, we're just going to keep hip-hopping down 108 and completely ignoring an ordinance we have that's weak to begin with. It's, it's all we have and, you know, I mean, I mean, I like it, but I, I think they could, you know, doctor up the house a little bit and definitely improve the landscaping, get rid of all those deciduous shrubs around that building.
Well, and we do require 10-foot buffers. 10-foot landscaping buffers adjacent to residential property or other property which are buffers deemed by the board to be appropriate.
So that's what our regulation calls for.
Correct.
Rob, do you, you want to stand up for a minute? Do, do you have a, a problem if we get a landscape architect just to help us review?
I, I do.
You do? Okay.
Let me just tell you why.
Sure. That's what I want to hear.
We, we've been in this statutory process for a while. We've had plenty of time to bring in any expert. We've hired several. We're happy to go, I'm happy to go back and work on that landscape buffer. I think we've all seen enough buffering to understand we know when something's buffered or not. I've worked with the gentleman that used to be in Stratum and I would vehemently oppose the use of him. I've had enough projects that we couldn't build because of the cost that he put into them. We've had to go back and rework them several times. Plan board has the right to go ask and it go for any expert advice that they want to get. At the end of the day is, I think that we have, every time we've gotten good usable feedback, we've responded and made changes to the plan and, and we've made progress with it. We'd like that opportunity to do that. We're not going to extend past our next meeting, so we're going to be here for an up or down vote. So hopefully we'll have our input from DOT, we'll have, put our best foot forward on what we can do here. We know where our budget is, we know what we can build and make the site work. We're doing our best to take the buildings off of 108. If anybody else was building buildings out there, they'd be building industrial buildings on 108. So I think we have, at every opportunity, incorporated the board's advice and direction and taken a step forward. I think we can do that again on the landscaping. I hear the board's concern about it. We certainly can do that. I'm happy to hear that we've made some progress on the architectural renderings of the buildings. So that's my two cents.
Okay.
And we'd like the opportunity to just try and, and just complete the landscape buffering along 108 for you.
That, I believe that's your right to ask for it that way and...
Using this kind of a configuration, 10-foot wide.
So moving forward, we will...
With the berm.
You will update the architectural plans, right? The landscape architecture plans. We will continue hopefully to get a closure letter from...
Underwood.
Underwood engineer and on the, on the site design stuff. Hopefully DOT will, will have a, an answer, right, for us or a permit or not.
So I'd like to talk, maybe we can revisit that discussion topic for a moment.
Yeah.
Is, it, and it's, it's our suggestion that, and we're, we've kind of been piecemealed into a lot of the, the different incremental improvements out there, which we're happy to do and we think that they're functional and work and they'll make the intersections better. We're maintaining, we're getting, we're achieving a lot of really great line of sight improvements coming out of the, out of the Forbes Road. Right now, if we were, if we were trying to build the intersection that's there, we wouldn't be allowed to. We're able to now get all of our line of sight left and right because of what we've been able to do on the two properties, maintain site easements. We're going to be cutting this grade back. This, this corner, if you're familiar with it, actually rises up and is a corner that sticks out. This road is a congestion point for snow and ice pack in the wintertime and this is very difficult to see. So we're going to be able to improve a lot of the functionality of that intersection there for DOT. We're swapping them two-to-one land, we're giving them twice the amount of land that we're swapping back from them to straighten out the right-of-way, which will give New Market and DOT a long-term ability to do widening or whatever the plans in the future are going to be for 108, which we just don't know. We were hoping to see the bike path go forward, to be honest with you. We've, and we've, and we provided land in the lot line adjustments for the town in New Market and that right-of-way.
And dedicated turn lanes.
Right. And, and out on, and as far as 108 goes, I, the, I really thought that Diane, you came up with a great idea in our conversation the other day in terms of trying to get this on the 10-year plan. DOT suggests, brought up a suggestion of us helping make some contribution and get a design going as one of the alternatives. We're happy to pledge some money to get that design going and if we could get consensus between the town and us to, and to, to give a clear signal to DOT, I think that would be helpful for DOT. We have, to be frank, a, we have a all-new crew at District Six and I don't know if you guys have had experience with them. They're, they're, they're decent guys. They're new, that is a very inexperienced crew from a right-of-way standpoint. I've been doing this for 25 years at District Six. I have never been through the things that I've been through with this district in the last two years. It's horrific. I have, I have applications that have been open eight months, 10 months, and a lot of people don't even realize that DES has a hard statutory timeframe of six months. DOT, I'm sorry. So we're really wrestling with that issue.
What are they proposing here? Are they looking to signalize this intersection?
No, they're not. The prob, here, the, the underlying problem here is that the pass-by traffic of the industrial park, not the industrial park traffic, the pass-by traffic that is driving this direction and this direction are always going to meet, always going to make any driveway trip meet a turn lane warrant. That turn lane warrant, as well as three or four other spots on 108, has been met for many, many years and is independent of our project. And we're happy and we sat down, I mentioned this the other day at TRC, we, we sat down in the scoping meeting eight months ago with DOT with several different design concepts. We were, we were going, we had the ability to do our buildings up high. They asked us to put the buildings down low and go inside the industrial park. We knew and they knew that we'd be bringing this traffic to one point on 108, which is what made sense to do. And the, we had this discussion, a very frank and honest discussion about, are you going to make us, if we do that and we commit to this type of a design, are you going to make us do, are you going to trip a turn lane warrant out here that has already been tripped? Or are you going to work with us for some compromise in what we can achieve out here? And they flat-out told us that they were not intending to go in that direction. And we've been operating under that, from a design standpoint, for all of this time.
Because you got rid of the three driveways along there.
Four.
Four, actually, the other new one too.
Right. And so we're hoping that, at, at the, at the end of their analysis, they're gonna make the right decision that they, in terms of what they've guided us and what we've relied on, and that we're making incremental progress out here on 108. If we could do these types of progress, this type of progress on a lot of intersections and get rid of a lot of these driveways, we'd be doing a lot on 108. Never mind the fact that the reason that we have all of that outbound traffic in the morning, in a one-hour peak, if you can stand out here in the middle of the day, there's no traffic. It's all leaving the town because there's no jobs in New Market. It's coming back in at the end of the day because they're coming back from other jobs. This is putting jobs in the town. And so there's a fundamental discussion that takes place with this type of thing. Here we are, letting the tail wag the dog. The underlying construct is that because all of our people are commuting to towns for other jobs, they're preventing us from building our buildings for jobs in the town? It's ludicrous, makes no sense whatsoever. So we think that the DOT has been derelict on that road and their duties on that road for 20 years. We're not saying we don't have an obligation to contribute to it. And if we sat down on day one and they said, listen, we're gonna have to do something about this, here's an honest contribution that you can make, we would have participated in that just the same. We've just already spent a lot of money participating and we're getting death by a thousand cuts. We're still willing to go forward and help with the design of that turn lane and to do the improvements and to give them the right of way that we have. And I just wanna make sure that this board's aware of what we're trying to do and put forward at DOT and that if we, and, and hopefully to get some support from New Market because ultimately this is a New Market permit. And, and, and this is a sensible permit. This is, this is, this was, this is a worthwhile exercise. It was right that, that you guys said, hey, let's look at this intersection, see what we can do, see what our obligations are. We're happy to step in and do our share. But it's unreasonable for us to be asked to go into this process with DOT and for DOT to say, you have to fix everybody's problem because we don't have any money for you.
You already made improvements with that little house to the side. You widened that so trucks can turn.
That's correct. We're doubling all of that up. All of these language will improve, all these sight lines will improve. This will get a dedicated center turn. The big, the big important part about the, this improvement in this intersection is that it lowers the amount of time somebody's sitting here to turn left.
Right, yeah.
If you have a truck sitting here waiting to get out, it's not blocking up half the road and making the person out here wait. Or having a truck pull out of this intersection and have to drive halfway across 108 to make the turn.
Right, just one lane.
So there, these are, even though this looks like it's not on 108, the significance of these improvements to how this, the actual movement here functions is very, very significant.
Thank you.
So that's my two cents and that's our DOT update.
And you're not gonna have that many more trips?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three trips.
In our peak hour, yeah.
Alrighty, I'm kind of ready to move on. You wanna, you wanna make a motion to continue?
Does the applicant feel they have a direction from the board?
Landscaping?
Correct, we'll, we'll go, go back to work on improving our buffer on 108.
Yep, and I would suggest get that to Diane so we can disseminate that before, you know, time before next week.
Sure.
So if we have any comments, I'd rather have, anybody have any comments, get them to Diane, we can get them right back to them. So we're not looking at that the first time, you know, at the next meeting. So hopefully as many back and forth as happened.
And Rose, if you, in all sincerity, if you have a list of different trees and things that, give me a few.
You can stop, stop by my property, I'll show you what I planted and, and how I applied it and you.
Where's your property?
On Route 152, used to be the old golf driving range and ice cream place.
You won't be able to see it because it's all buffered.
Geez, I've driven by it a hundred times.
And I'll show you the trees, the golden threads, they'll be stu, I mean, you know, if you're putting that in the front and you want to enhance the building landscape and it's like a woman going, getting dressed in a wedding gown and she's got rollers in her hair, you know? The right shrubs in front of that could really make that building pop. I'm serious. Don't.
When you say.
And you might get a yes vote from Roseanne.
You might, you might.
When you say on, if you're on 152 on the, like, if I'm headed towards Nottingham, on the right.
Headed towards, yeah, 332.
All right.
332.
I'm gonna take you up on that.
Really, and I'll show you the golden thread cypress that I mentioned, the arbovites, I can show you all that.
What was golden thread?
Golden thread weeping cypress.
Weeping cypress, sorry.
Yes. And now's the time to get them to the half price.
Keep moving, so we're gonna try to dissolve any outstanding issues you have with Underwood?
The last TRC meeting, he said no, he just wanted to bring up the.
Okay.
More to show you what the site was gonna look like.
That's fine, okay, good. Update us on DOT, hopefully maybe you'll have a DOT permit by then.
And. That'd be great, I doubt it, but.
But any approval's just subject to that.
Yes, absolutely.
I think, I think we'll have a direction for where they're going so that the board can feel comfortable that we're gonna get there.
And then do we need, this is a question for you, Val, or legal expert, do we need a, do we need a waiver request for architecture? Or do we just take it up at the?
You need a, yeah, you need a specific waiver request.
Okay.
And the justification for that as required under the.
We'll, we'll prepare that.
So we have that for the, so we'll have that to discuss. And again, the sooner we can get that, if we can get that a couple of weeks before the meeting.
We'll get you everything next week, that won't be a problem.
Perfect, alrighty. Val?
So I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing on the site plan application at Two Forbes Road, tax map R3, Lot 9-6, 175 Exeter Road, tax map R3, Lot 6, 177 Exeter Road, tax map R3, Lot 7, and 181 Exeter Road until the November fifteenth meeting.
Second.
Motion made, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thanks so much.
Thank you all.
You'll see in.
Have a good week.
Only one meeting in November, correct?
Can you leave the records with us?
Sure. When is that meeting?
And they need to actually submit those renderings.
Thank you.
They're part of the record.
Yes.
Well, I drive by you twice a day.
They need to get records.
Yes, we need to get those.
They need to get you those renderings.
I usually come through there.
I'll leave you those right now. They don't have any title on them, but.
That's fine. Well, I'm, I'm, I'll be going through there around four.
Alrighty, Rosie, you gonna sit in the rest of the meeting?
Okay.
I just wanna keep it rolling. I gotta go get my beauty sleep.
We're leaving you these here.
Go get your what?
I gotta go get my beauty sleep.
You don't want more.
He's a lot of it.
Next on the agenda is why they're dismantling his new and old business. Anybody have any new or old business?
No, that's none of us.
I have one thing under kind of new business slash chairman's report, more new business, I guess, is, we're all in, we know we're in a severe drought and the, you know, the town hasn't really invoked a complete water ban yet. They do have the ability to.
No, they have.
Well, yeah, but that's for town water. They have, they have the ability to invoke a, a water ban on private wells also.
Oh, oh, private wells, okay.
Which they have not. But it brings a lot, obviously, we're in a drought, we can't do anything about the drought. But we do spend a lot of time on this board talking about our water resources. And every development such as this, you know, the biggest issues that we talk about are generally stormwater management, how you treat the stormwater and infiltration, how you infiltrate stormwater into the, you know, the idea nowadays is infiltrate as much as you can to help recharge groundwater. Having said all that, I'm wondering if it's time we started looking at, you know, updating our stormwater.
Yep.
Well, that's future land use.
Yes.
Well, that is part of it and then we have.
We have a section in our.
Yeah, and then we have our running water resource chapter that we might wanna revisit to see if there are recommendations from that chapter that have not been implemented yet.
Yes.
So.
So what I was gonna suggest is that for the next meeting, if, if members have a chance, if you could just review our current chapter and regulations and see. No, I'd like, I think at some point I would like to, with the support of the board, I would like to go and have a conversation with the town administrator about prioritizing how we update our master plan. Because that's, we seem to, through, I don't have to think through any fault to this board, we fall behind significantly in updating. And I know you don't say anything, I'm just talking.
We've got a meeting tomorrow night with Dale, the committee that we have with the future land use and, and Val set up a great grid that.
Okay.
For us to go over, so we're actually gonna be starting some of that.
Okay. You know, we're, we're statutorily required to update our chapters and we tend to fall behind.
Yeah.
And it's, it's generally a financial thing on the town side is, you know, it's, it's 10 to $20,000 to update a chapter.
And there's two parts of it. We update the chapter, but it can't sit on the shelf.
Right.
As Diane said, we've got our first meeting tomorrow, we've, we've pulled out all the, well, I'm gonna call the punchless items of recommendations and further follow-up and I think at the committee level, our process is gonna be to prioritize at the committee, bring that to the board, see where the board wants to prioritize what next steps would be relative to zoning.
And the other thing is we're dealing with stormwater in particular, we're dealing with kind of contradictory goals is we wanna treat stormwater and infiltrate it, but we don't wanna have a lot of surface water, which breeds mosquitoes with all the sicknesses and illnesses that are coming around. So there's a, a balance and what, how we have to strike a balance on, you know, it doesn't go any good to protect the environment and have everybody get sick because of.
Yeah.
You know, infections. But anyway, okay, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. Does anybody else have any new or old business?
I, I just, you know, I have concerns with all the businesses and homes coming in issuing all these water, water permits for all these homes when, you know, we're in a, you know, level four here. And, and to me, it's, it's getting to the point where, you know, I would see, I mean, years ago before the mills were built, they said we had 35,000 gallon surplus. That was the amount of gallons we had and they said it would have been enough for the mills with 60 units. Well, they got 120 units in there and then we got 50 more units at the golf course. We don't have the water for it right now and until every well that we're considering is online, is blended in time, hopefully it doesn't need treatment because we should have added the treatment into the, the water treatment plant, didn't do that. Because if you can't treat it fast enough and you can't, then you can't blend it fast enough, so then you can't get it stored to use. So that slows the whole process down. And I just, I think the planning board should really consider some type of moratorium on water permits until our water situation is completely fixed.
I, I understand your concern, I think that's way beyond our purview. I mean, I think we have enough water, assuming the McIntosh water comes in good. I would have liked to have put the treatment up initially up front too, but we didn't do that. I do believe that, and I will check this with, I will check with Sean and Rick, but I do believe that if, if, there's been one town that I know of, this is years ago, where the state came in and said you can't issue any more permits because you don't have enough water.
They almost did that with us.
They do, they, oh, absolutely.
And they do do it.
Absolutely, so what I'm saying is the state is paying attention to it too, so.
Yeah.
If we were to be in a dire strait, the state would come in and say, you, you don't have enough water resources, we'll, no more water hookups. But that's not the planning board's decision. But I understand your concern, we need to look at all these things and go forward.
There's something in the works I might add that Sean Gregg has been in touch with an engineer who's putting together a request for proposals to do a water build-out analysis. And I heard from Bill Brown from Wright Pierce, who was working with him on that. So I think, I believe he might have received some feedback from the council to move forward with something like that.